I'll call the meeting to order and have our clerk call the roll.
Bartlett.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Swadley.
Here.
Burzma.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Mieski.
Here.
Engelberger.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Trull.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
We have ten Alders present, or eleven, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'm going to move around a little bit, so I'll ask your indulgence on this. We have, um, older person Jensen is not feeling well, so don't let him breathe on you. And as soon as we finish with the Alder Manic District One appointment, um, he's going to go home. So with your indulgence, we will skip right to, um, new business as soon as we finish our communications, and we'll go through a quick proclamation, and then public comment. Let's do the consent agenda as well, those will be real quick. Then we'll go to new business, Agenda Item Eight. We'll do Agenda Item Eleven. And then Agenda Item Thirteen, so that Joe Murray, our consultant from Springstead, can get on his way back to, um, Milwaukee, correct Joe? That's right. Are there any concerns with a switch like that? So it's eight, thirteen, and what was the one?
Eleven.
Eight, thirteen, and?
Eleven.
Eleven. Since we thought we should talk about that new Public Works facility before we talk about borrowing for it. Get it in the right, get it in the right order. So I'll begin by asking if there are communications from our Alder Persons this evening. Seeing none, I'd like to read a proclamation. And this is a proclamation in honor of Donald, Donald Hanson's service to the city of Stoughton. So whereas Stoughton is a community known for the dedication and commitment of its employees and citizens, whereas Don Hanson began his employment with the City of Stoughton Electric Department on November twenty-ninth, nineteen seventy-six, as an electric lineman. Whereas Donald Hanson contributed to providing reliable, reliable electric service to our homes, businesses, farms, social services, schools, and local government agencies in the city of Stoughton and the townships of Dunkirk, Dunn, Pleasant Springs, Porter, and Rutland. Whereas the electric utility industry continuously changed over the past decades and will continue to change. Whereas Don Hanson actively participated in the transition to our changing workforce by training all of the present line men at Stoughton Utilities to provide safe, reliable power to our citizens. Whereas Don Hanson retired from employment with Stoughton Utilities on January second, two thousand and eighteen, after forty-one years of dedicated service. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Stoughton acknowledges and expresses its appreciation to Donald Hanson for his willingness to serve and his decades of contribution to public service. So, thank you to a dedicated. And Don continues to serve on our fire department, so he's not, not done yet. Minutes and reports are in your packet this evening. Public comment period, I don't have anyone registered to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak at the public comment period? Seeing none. The consent agenda tonight consists of our January twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen council minutes, Resolution Fifteen of two thousand and eighteen, which is authorizing and directing the proper city officials to issue operators licenses to the following applicants. Jeff Van De Zee at Quick Trip. Kristi Rybeck at Nevermind Bar. Clint, oh I apologize Clint, I'm saying your name wrong. Clint Kosobaki at Quick Trip. And Cecilia Adams at the Aldi Store. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Second, it's a motion by Burzma, second by Johnson. Does any Alder Person wish to remove an item from that consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, as we talked about, then we're gonna skip old business, go straight to new business. Agenda Item Eight, Alder Manic District One appointments. Interviews, appointment, administration of oath, and the seating of the new Alder Person. So quickly review the process. Each candidate has been asked a series of predetermined questions. They've all been presented with those responses found in your packet tonight. Holly will read the questions, and each candidate will verbally respond to those questions. And just like the sequence of candidate names are selected for placement on a ballot when you go to the election and your voting place, the clerk has done the same for these, um, the order of the interviewees this evening. And those have turned out to be Matt Hannah, Denise Duranzik, and then David Erdman. When the interviews have been completed, I'll entertain nominations for that position. And after all nominations have been received, Alder Persons will vote for their choice as we've done in the past, we could do it, um, we've done it by paper ballot in the past. If, if the council chooses that's how they'd like to, to vote again. I see some heads nodding. So we'll do a paper ballot, paper ballot vote at the end. So we'll begin with Matt Hannah. Welcome.
Thank you, guys.
All right, question one is, discuss your occupation, training, and education. What characteristics, qualifications, and experiences do you have that support your candidacy and potential for contribution as an Alder Person?
Great. So I know you guys all have the answer there in front of you. And I can summarize a little bit, but a lot of you know me, um, I serve on the Planning Commission. This is my fourth year on there. I really enjoy being a part of this process. Being a part, involved in the city. Being involved in good, healthy debate, you know, I've worked alongside a lot of you. And that's really opened my eyes to, you know, what's going on in the city. It sparked my interest in being involved. I have a long history, uh, family history, being involved in local politics. I've been surrounded by it pretty much my entire life, so, um, let's just say it's, it's in my blood. I have a passion for it. As, uh, as a landscape professional, um, I got my degree at UW Madison Landscape Architecture. But really what I love most about my job is getting to meet so many different people. And a lot of those people I meet here in Stoughton. So I've had a great opportunity to meet a lot of, you know, single-family residents, you know, our constituents. Work with them on their dreams, I've worked with local businesses, condo associations, so wide array of, you know, groups, um, large and small. And, you know, the whole goal of that process is, you know, they engage me to help create a vision for them. Solve problems for them. And it's a really interactive process that I enjoy, you know, getting to know them, their lifestyle, their business, how, you know, um, how they want, or what's their vision. So really engage the process of asking questions, um, coming up with ideas. And through that process is working through budgets, designs, um, you know, following the steps of a process. A lot of, uh, you know, a lot of stuff that happens on the Planning Commission, those type of projects. And a lot of the projects that we work on, they're just different scales. And so, and then just the way that I interact with people in my career is the same way I, you know, approach working with, you know, local citizens. And actually during a lot of those interactions and meetings with, you know, local citizens, there's a lot of conversation, it's not all business. It's really getting to know them and establishing, you know, long-term relationships. I have a lot of continuing customers and, uh, I mentioned my time on the, um, Planning Commission, and I get to hear a lot of what they think about what's going on, and what they see and what the vision is. And, you know, I do my best to educate them on, on, you know, what I know and, um, you know, the direction things are going, and that's something that I definitely consider and, you know, when I do, you know, serve for the city, so.
Thank you. In your opinion, what are the most important current issues for the city of Stoughton? Please discuss one of these issues in detail and how, and describe how you would lead a committee to a solution.
Sure. Well, as I stated in my answer, I think there's probably a big three that I see right now. And that would be the decline in school enrollment, which kind of follows into attracting younger families. And then the big riverfront development. But as I stated, I think, you know, there's, there's a common thread through those three issues that I think would really help the community. And also as my role, you know, if I was elected or chosen, I guess, appointed, you know, I'd love to pick one issue, but I'm really not here because of one issue. You know, I'm here to make the best decision. And, and what I think would, would be great for the city is to, you know, maybe have a clear vision. You know, where, what direction do we want to go? Who do we want to be? So that the citizens aren't left kind of wondering, um, what's next? Where are we going next? Be a proactive step to take for the community. It's something that I've, you know, um, you know, through the comprehensive plan, I think that's a very, very useful tool. It's mandated by the state that we do it, but I don't think that it needs to end there. I think there's a lot of information within there that we can expand upon to help create this vision. As an example, again, I'll use the city of Appleton. But this is a document that they put together based on their comprehensive plan, and they expanded on it. And number three is a community vision, and it lists out nineteen different points of what type of community they want to be, what are the attributes that they strive for. And it's, it's a comprehensive vision based on all the other characteristics in that plan. You know, I, a lot of my interactions with, you know, citizens is, I didn't even know that was gonna happen, or I don't know what was going on. You know, and as I follow up at the end of my answer, I said, I think we need to have an internal look at or analysis of, of how we're delivering our news and communicating to our citizens. I think there's a lot of tools out there, and there's a lot of technology. You know, we have WSTO, um, and the, and the hub, but what are we doing with our website, our social media? You know, we need to, if we're really looking to attract younger families, we need to communicate on their, you know, the way they receive information. So I think, uh, you know, it's, it's kind of a broad stroke of it, but I think it applies to every issue that we need to address to come up really for what's best for Stoughton.
Thank you.
Question number three is, if there was an issue on the table that you agreed with, but your constituents disagreed with, how would you vote and why?
Well, I kind of find this as a tricky question. And I say that because it's really hard to understand or reach out and hear from every single constituent. I think there's a lot of people in our city that might not be comfortable coming to a meeting like this, and that's why they have us. Or they just choose not to, you know, communicate. But really, what I would want to do is, is, you know, maybe use some of those social media streams to communicate with my constituents, get responses, listen, um, and share the information that I have. Because I know, you know, I mentioned social media a lot, but that, that can be dangerous as well because you want to have all that information out there. So engaging in those, those conversations, engaging in healthy debate, that ultimately brings us to make the best decision for Stoughton, so, um, yeah. I would listen to everything that is stated, consider everything that is stated, but in the end, making the best decision for Stoughton is, is what I would do.
The council meetings are every second and fourth Tuesday of the month, and there are two standing committees you would be assigned to in addition to other meetings, correspondence, and information that will require your attention. Do you anticipate a problem in attending evening meetings or fulfilling other time commitments of an Alder Person?
Not at this time. I'd say in my history on the Planning Commission, I've maybe missed two meetings in four years, so.
Very nice. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and next would be Denise Duranzik.
Good evening, and, uh, thank you for your attention. And I also want to thank the other two individuals who applied for this position. We always want to encourage people to become involved in our community. Are you gonna read the questions again?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Discuss your occupation, training, and education. What characteristics, qualifications, and experiences do you have that support your candidacy and potential for contribution as an Alder Person?
I think I'd like to start with my government and civic experience. As you all know, I serve on the RDA, and a major focus for me has been holding the RDA fiscally accountable by requesting regular financial reports, reviewing TID five audits, and nudging the, uh, RDA to prioritize infrastructure improvements for the riverfront redevelopment. I also assisted Derek Wesby in formatting the RDA website to ensure information was easily accessible. I helped to plan and advertise the Riverfront Redevelopment Shorette, and I spent all three days listening and talking to community members. And I mean all three days. Before that, I was on the Stoughton Library Board. I served as president for one term, participated in strategic planning twice. I co-chaired the fundraising subcommittee to raise funds for the second floor renovation. We raised two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars to assist the city in renovating the second floor. I am proud of this community for helping us renovate that floor. I've also been your Dane County Board Supervisor. While a supervisor, I served on the Public Safety Committee, and also the Health and Human Service Committee, which had a budget of two hundred and twenty million dollars. And yes, I read every line of that budget because I wanted to know how your money was being spent. I prevented the closure of the Stoughton Health and Human Service Office by working with other county board supervisors and pointing out the importance of having services available in southeastern part of the county. And then in the last decade, I served on the city council for seven and a half years. I served on all the standing committees except for Public Works. And some of the other committees I served on Board of Review, Commission on Aging, Ethics Board, Library Board, Planning Commission, and with Bob on the Utilities. I, I was Chair of Finance, Parks and Rec, and Utilities. I also served on the Smart Growth Steering Committee. I was instrumental in the passage of the Big Box Store Ordinance. Alder Person Kathleen Kelly and I researched the topic of ordinances regulating big box stores. We shared the information with council, and they agreed to hire a consultant. He helped us to craft an ordinance to meet Stoughton's needs. Because of my experience, I think I can hit the ground running and be a good resource for this body. I've exhibited the ability to work with my colleagues to get things done. Now, you want my education and job experience. Well, I have earned, um, a BS in biochemistry and physical therapy along with a master's in movement science at, from the UW Madison. My most recent employments were Meriter Hospital and then Stoughton Hospital. I was hired by Meriter to develop and coordinate an orthopedic spine clinic. In addition, I set up the program to train the physical therapists in this specialty. After that, I worked at Stoughton Hospital as a per diem, and I retired from my profession in two thousand and sixteen. Now my job required me to evaluate physical problems daily. Using these findings, my patient and I would develop goals for treatment program and work together to solve those problems. Patients would be evaluated each visit, their treatment plan adjusted as necessary for optimal results. My goal was to create a program to facilitate success. Education and exercises were the cornerstone, but the patient needed to buy into the program for success. This is the way I approach problems. What are the root causes to a problem? What course of actions will most effectively address the problem? Then implement and reevaluate if the problem is reduced. With my scientific background, I used data to help me evaluate and set a course of action. In addition, I had to deal with a variety of people over the years, many of them in pain. And for those of you who have been in pain, you can understand how that can be very difficult at times. Learning to listen and pick up body language is essential when motivating people to succeed. These skills are important when interacting with council, staff, and the public. Okay, I'm done.
Okay.
With that question.
Question number two. In your opinion, what are the most important current issues for the city of Stoughton? Please discuss one of these issues in detail and describe how you would lead a committee to a solution.
The most important current issues for the city revolve around financing services and being pushed to create more TIF districts as a source of future income. The borrowing, we assume, will impact funds available to provide services now. Therefore, we need to regularly analyze the relationship between what we have borrowed and funds available for operation. The use of TIF to promote development should also be critically looked at with a criteria established to evaluate what is the best interest of the community. Another area for the city to explore is our housing stock. Since property taxes are based on the value of property, we should seriously look at our housing stock and future development. We need to understand how to promote growth that balances multiple property values to sustain a tax rate that covers quality services. Now, the process to solve a problem should start with a defined problem or question such as, why do we struggle to have enough money for the day-to-day operations of the city? The participants in this group should be willing to keep an open mind and not jump to a solution. When leading a group, you should be aware of your own biases. The leader not only leads, but directs, and at times follows. Establishing ground rules are important, i.e. no personal attacks, stay on point. Everyone needs to contribute, everything is on the table. I would brainstorm to identify root causes of the problem and eliminate those that we have no control over. Use data to gain a better understanding of the root, uh, causes identified. Since there's usually more than one cause, the group needs to rank from most likely to less likely to impact the solution. From there, make recommendations on the course of action the city should take to improve funding using facts and figures to support your position. Of course, you need to reevaluate the effectiveness of your actions.
All right. Question three. If there was an issue on the table that you agreed with, but your constituents disagreed with, how would you vote and why?
Okay. In my ten years as an elected official, it was rare to know when a majority of my constituents disagreed with my position. In the two cases where I had strong evidence that my position was different. In the first case, um, I found a compromise. I was, um, up for election that year, so when I knocked on doors, I communicated my, the compromised position. And I got reelected, and so I just assumed that people liked the fact that I found kind of, some kind of middle ground. And in the other case, I actually voted against my preferred position. I do feel strongly that, um, you, you do represent the people in your district. But in the future, I may not, uh, I may go with my preferred position. Because when I make a decision, I look at the short and long-term outcomes. Again, if there's data available, I use it. And in addition, my values and conscience will guide me.
Question number four. Council meetings are the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month, and there are two standing committees that you will be assigned to in addition to other meetings, correspondence, and information that will require your attention. Do you anticipate a problem in attending evening meetings or fulfilling other time commitments of an Alder Person?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, but not least, is David Erdman.
Good evening. Thanks, everybody, for your time this evening.
All right, question number one. Discuss in your occupation, training, and education, or discuss your occupation, training, and education. What characteristics, qualifications, and experiences do you have that support your candidacy and potential for contribution as an Alder Person?
Okay, thank you. Well, professionally, I'm currently the Capital Finance Director for the state of Wisconsin, which means I'm responsible for the debt management and capital planning for the state's debt, which is outstanding right now at fourteen billion dollars. Been doing that since nineteen ninety-four, been employed by the state since nineteen ninety-nine. In my office, we also work with communities to secure clean water fund loans for water and wastewater drinking projects. City of Stoughton Utilities has received a few of those. We're also responsible for some venture capital investment activities of the state of Wisconsin. And up until last week, or last month, I was also responsible for the state's 529 college savings program. So I have an extensive financial background. My education is from the University of Wisconsin-Lacrosse, a degree in public financial administration. Minor in political science and business. I'm a government junkie. You know, I watch these meetings on TV. And after, after graduation from college, I had a short stint where I was appointed a Village Board Member from my hometown, Village of Westfield, Wisconsin. I, after that, got a job at the state of Wisconsin, moved to Stoughton, and I've been a Stoughton resident since nineteen ninety. So that's professionally. On a more civic area, I'm currently a member of the Stoughton EMS. Been a member of that since two thousand and eight. Currently a squad leader on the Board of Directors for EMS. Also, a member of Stoughton Utilities as a citizen member, been serving that for more than ten years. In addition to that, I'm also on the zoning Board of Appeals, have been on that for about fifteen years. And I'm also a chief election inspector for the state of Stoughton. I've been doing that since I moved to Stoughton in nineteen ninety. So obviously, a lot of interest in continuing my service to the city of Stoughton. And when this opportunity came up, I saw it as a natural for me to express some interest. As I told someone, I'm not getting any younger either, so.
Thank you. Question number two. In your opinion, what are the most important current issues for the city of Stoughton? Please discuss one of these issues in detail and describe how you would lead a committee to a solution.
Okay. Well, I think the three big, um, challenges that Stoughton faces, and I think it's common for any growing community, is development, I threw youth in there, and also efficient government. The one I gave an answer for, my response was youth. And my interest there is that, prior to becoming so active in city government, I led youth ministry at a local church for about ten years. So I had an opportunity to work with a lot of youth, youth who are now graduated and helping support me. But I think the city of Stoughton could make a bigger commitment to youth through additional commitment, additional resources. You know, the city has some activities, local churches have some activities, um, you know, athletics have some activities. And I think it'd be really cool for someone to take the lead to kind of, you know, take those silos down and try to get everyone working together to provide a better, more expansive opportunity for our youth in our community. You know, Stoughton Police has a community police officer in one of the schools. Expand that, expand some time at the youth center. I think, you know, making a better opportunity for our youth only results in overall services, or better services to the city of Stoughton due to reduce crime, reduce juvenile temptations and otherwise. So that's the one I answered. You know, obviously development's an item that's been discussed a lot. Efficient government's the other one that I would talk about briefly. At the state level, you know, every governor comes in and has a commission to reduce waste. And as a state employee, it's a pain to go through all the questions and so forth. But it's a process, I think, that all governments should go through periodically because, you know, sometimes government's just getting the means of kind of doing the same thing over and over. And if you take a look at it, there's ways to maybe make the process a little easier, which could have some savings to help with budgetary relief.
Question number three. If there was an issue on the table that you agreed with, but your constituents disagreed with, how would you vote and why?
Yeah. Interesting question. Obviously, being appointed or elected, I have some responsibilities to the constituents. We want to definitely make sure I understand their condition, or their, their concerns and convey them to the city council for discussion. But I think ultimately, as I said in my response, you know, District One doesn't win if the city of Stoughton doesn't win. So I need to take their concerns along with information from city staff, city consultants, city professional advisors, and take that all into consideration and make an overall decision that's gonna be the best for the city of Stoughton.
Question four. Council meetings are the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month, and there are two standing committees that you will be assigned to in addition to other meetings, correspondence, and information that will require your attention. Do you anticipate a problem in attending evening meetings or fulfilling? Do you anticipate a problem in attending evening meetings or fulfilling any time commitments of an older person?
See no problems at all. I think my attendance in the committees that I've been a part of in the past has been very great, very committed to the Stoughton EMS, do a lot of call time there, so definitely have a lot of commitment to the city of Stoughton and look forward to continuing that through an appointment to the city council. So thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you to all three applicants for applying this evening and stepping forward to serve our community. Holly, will hand out some paper ballots, but I will open the floor at this time for nominations. Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you. So this question, I have a question for the group, and this will be for all three of them. Something that is near and dear to me is the highway trailer. And I've seen that in the documents here that it's been kind of mentioned or skirted around. So I'd like to know if a resolution was presented to the council. And in that resolution, it was to remove the moratorium on demolition and to start the immediate process to demolish the trailer complex, would you support it?
I was looking for nominations.
Oh, I want to ask that question.
Yep, I understand that. I guess I would ask the council, though, as a whole, would you like to open up the floor for questions, additional questions, other than those that were posed on the written? And I'm going to look around for kind of a verbal, additional questions are fine, we'd have to ask all three the same questions, if you wanted to do that, or if you'd rather...
I guess I got a question. Is this what we do, or do we...
Done it both ways in the past. We've done it both ways in the past. We have opened up some questions, or we've, whatever the council chooses is how we proceed. Council, oops.
Yep, it's up to the council to decide what you want to do. So Alder Person Jensen, you could move that the council authorize additional questions and see if that's what the council wants to do.
Isn't that up to the chair?
No, it's up to the council.
I think it's the council's.
Council decides in the process. Sorry?
Did I make that motion?
Okay. So there's a motion to ask additional questions.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Jensen, a second by Boersma to open the floor to additional questions. Comments or questions, I guess, from council at this time? Seeing none, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, that motion carries. Alder Person Jensen, would you like to repeat your question?
He's already asked it.
Okay, do we need it to be...
Does the clerk have a question? No, you want to... Go ahead.
It was a long one, too. It was a long question, is all I said, so go ahead.
I'd say all three of the candidates have knowledge of...
Could you speak, I know you're not feeling well, but...
Contaminate the microphone.
We'll sanitize it. Go ahead, we'll sanitize it later. Burn it.
All three of the candidates have knowledge of the trailer building, they had, you know, for different reasons, Denise being on RDA, Matt, you know, planning, and Dave as an So, I mean, they all have come from it in different perspectives, and so I wanted to know, should a resolution, such as I stated, if that resolution was to come to council, would they support it?
Okay.
Can you say again what the resolution is?
The resolution would simply be to remove the demolition moratorium and to start the process for the immediate demolition of the trailer complex.
Remove the demolition moratorium entirely, or only from the highway trailer building?
For now, how about entirely? I don't care. It's either way, just, you know, if it's just a trailer building, that's fine.
Okay, so we'll... Sid, did you have something to add to that question?
I did have a question. It just seems to me, Greg, that it's kind of putting at people with the, you know, basically give us your opinion. There may, I would just like to add one thing to that, and that is if somebody didn't have an opinion about that, that they should be able to decline and not take a position right now on that. I mean, I think it would be important that people have the right to say, I haven't come to a decision, so it's fine.
Certainly.
Just plug an answer in, that's all.
Alder Person Engelberger, if you had...
I would rephrase the question. I mean, rather than ask a specific question like that, which you could, you could ask 20 different questions, specific ways, why don't you just ask, what is your opinion regarding...
No, I'm sorry, Mike, I would rather have just a yes or no answer.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we'll start with those answers, just as we did the other questions, beginning with Matt Hemm, no.
Some clarification.
Sorry.
Sure. Some clarification. So your question is to remove the moratorium on the highway trailer building?
That or the full moratorium, doesn't matter.
It's two different issues.
No, you got to decide.
Yeah, it has to be one or the other.
Let's just say the trailer complex.
My understanding is the only moratorium is on the blacksmith shop.
That's correct.
Right.
So there is no moratorium on the highway trailer building itself.
It's the complex.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
That's a fact.
It's the fact. We've removed it.
If you don't have that, if that moratorium is not removed from that portion of the building, nothing comes down. So if you remove it from the complex, it's taking, you know, if you want to be that specific, okay, that's fine.
Well, I think that's the issue. I think you have, you have an opportunity to remove the highway trailer building and let the blacksmith shop building remain. In fact, you made the motion to do that.
I did.
And this body approved that. So that decision's already been made. So when you ask a question about removing a building from a moratorium that's not on a moratorium, I find that a little bit misleading.
Absolutely. And I'll clarify it. Remove the moratorium from the blacksmith shop so that the RDA can go ahead with the demolition of the entire complex.
Okay, did the candidates hear that?
Did you hear that, Matt?
It was very quiet, and I know you're not feeling well.
Can you repeat it?
Yep, could you repeat?
Yep. It would be to remove the moratorium on the blacksmith shop so that the RDA can start the process for the immediate demolition of the trailer complex.
Okay, yeah, we can repeat it. Alder Person, or Alder Person, Denise is stating that she can't hear it. His question was, would you, and I'm going to paraphrase, so correct me, do you support removing the moratorium on the blacksmith shop or the blacksmith portion of the highway trailer building so that the entire building can be demolished? Is that what I heard, Greg?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I object to that question because you're not giving these three candidates enough information. You're putting them on a spot with little, real factual information for them to make a really good decision. And so, to me, it's trying to heat a debate that we're putting people on the spot when they don't have the information of costs, budgets, anything like that, that it, to me, it's, I feel embarrassed to ask questions that people that come up here and they're applying for this job, and they're being put on a spot that is a very heated argument. I think it's really in poor taste.
Okay. Alder Person Mieske.
Sadly, this question has been asked. You know, this process and the questions that were presented for them to all answer was basically designed to show, basically, the competence and understanding of city government and how it works. I don't want to know an individual's stance on one thing. I don't want a tailor-made candidate just so that they can support my one pet peeve on council. Sadly, that's what I'm hearing. I'm representing the same district that Alder Jensen is, and I could say it's the opposite. And, you know, this fight can go on and on. I don't think this is appropriate. I don't believe, you know, if we want to ask generalized questions, I'm more than happy to hear those. These specific to the point because I'm interested in this one tiny thing, I think is incredibly inappropriate. And I don't really want to spend the time going down this road.
Okay, I'm going to have Matt help us clarify. The question that was brought before the council was, can older persons ask more additional questions? And there was no clarifying to that. So I guess without any more clarifying statements to that, the council agreed that yes, additional questions could be asked.
Right, so right now, that's the rule that you're operating under, is that additional questions can be asked.
And there was a question asked, and I understand some of you are uncomfortable with it, not feeling good with it, but that there was nothing further with the motion other than yes, additional questions could be asked. Alder Person Hirsch.
Can I make amendment to that motion?
Well, that motion's already been passed.
It's already passed.
Make another motion.
Can I make a new motion? That any question that is asked of these three candidates be general, that they can ask and not on a specific issue that we are addressing right now, due to them not having the background or the knowledge to be fair to them?
So is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Hirsch, second by Alder Person Engelberger, that any questions asked to continue our discussion with the three candidates would be in more of a general nature. And I paraphrased a little bit, but is that...
Yep.
Close, okay. So that is the motion on the floor. Alder Person Jensen.
I find it difficult to understand people's position on this because this is a safety issue. That's where I'm coming from. My main goal on this is that this is a public safety issue, period. We have a building down there that is falling apart, and we had an engineering study that was done seven months ago that told us that there was a fall hazard, and the council decided that, no, we don't really want to care about that, or we don't believe that, and we're just going to go our merry way and try and figure out a way to save this building. That is irresponsible, to me. That is irresponsible.
Point of order.
Okay.
It's not, this topic is not on the agenda.
Well, are you calling the question?
No, I'm just saying that this topic's not on the agenda, and we're getting way in the weeds here.
Well, it was part of the discussion of additional questions. You can certainly call the question and move forward.
Well, you don't need to recap the whole...
All right, let's move on.
I mean, you say it's a public safety issue, we've already taken action.
Right over here, you had somebody who said you wanted more...
You're making it a political issue, is what you're doing. That's what you're doing.
We'll move forward. There's a motion on the floor.
Public safety issue has been dealt with.
Council President Swelly, there's a motion on the floor. Additional comments to the motion on the floor, as stated by Alder Person Hirsch, second by Alder Person Engelberger, that any question asked of these candidates be in more of a general nature.
That's the motion.
Alder Person, that is the motion, correct?
Call the question.
All right.
Motion to close debate, requires two-thirds vote.
Is there a second required to close debate?
Aye.
I have to get out my cheat sheet. Someone said yes, I heard it.
Yes, second is required.
Is there a second to close debate?
Second.
Second by Johnson. The motion to close debate is not debatable. We'll vote by roll call.
And this is on Regina's?
No, it's two. First of all, it's to close debate, stop talking, and then we'll vote on Regina's motion.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Swadley?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mieske?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Trul?
Aye.
O'Connor?
No.
Bartlet?
Aye.
That motion carries on a vote of 10 to 1. The motion on the floor, made by Alder Person Hirsch, seconded by Alder Person Engelberger, is that all questions be of a general nature. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Let's vote by roll.
Alder Person Hirsch?
Aye.
Swadley?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mieske?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Jensen?
No.
Trul?
No.
O'Connor?
No.
Bartlet?
Aye.
I have eight to three. As well, that motion carries on a vote of eight to three. Do we have questions of a general nature for our three candidates this evening before we vote? Alder Person Boersma.
My question is somewhat similar to Greg's question, that is, do you have an opinion on whether or not the highway trailer building should be demolished? Or the, I'll rephrase that.
Make it more general.
The foundry.
Make it general.
That's not a general question. That's not a general question.
It's a statement of opinion. If they have an opinion and they want to go to it, I think that's a general question. I don't see how anybody can say that's not a general question. A general question is one that is open to a non-answer, basically. Somebody can say, I don't have an opinion, they can, it's a general question.
So here's my suggestion for handling this, given where we are. Alder Person can ask a question. If any other Alder Person wants to raise a point of order and believes that it's not an appropriate question, given the rules, they can raise a point of order. The mayor will then rule. The mayor's ruling is subject to appeal to the council. So we have a question from Alder Person Boersma, and so I think the procedure we should follow is if there's an objection to it, then we can hear the objection, it can be ruled on.
Okay. Okay, is there an objection to Alder Person Boersma's motion?
Question.
Or question?
So the question is, candidate for this position, do you have an opinion about whether or not the foundry, or the foundry part of the highway trailer building should be demolished?
Okay. Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would ask a general question of the three candidates. What are your thoughts?
Well, first of all, we need to act on his motion first.
He doesn't have a motion, as far as I know.
Well, we have to act on his question. Does anyone disagree with his question? If not, or is there a second?
I disagree with it because it's not a general question.
All right.
Your Honor, you get to rule first. Do you sustain the objection to the question or not? And your decision is appealable to the council.
Okay, I would say that it's not a general question. Is there an appeal by the council? All right, we'll move on from then to Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to ask a general question of the three candidates, of what your thoughts are with regard to the riverfront development, and you can answer any way you would like.
Is there a second to that?
Second. You don't need a second. This is just a question that's being asked that now they, unless there's an objection...
I thought we were going to argue a little bit longer there. And never really know where that's going.
We can argue. Let's find out their views.
All right, we'll begin with Mr. Hannah.
All right. Mike, can you just restate that question? Just, there's been a lot of questions thrown out here.
You bet. I would like to know from the candidates what your views are on the riverfront development.
Before I get into the answer, just one question on procedure, how we move forward. I'm happy to answer first on all the questions, but if the next few questions, if we could switch up the order, that'd be great.
Good idea.
But in regards to the riverfront, you know, answering a specific question about that is really challenging at this point, so I will answer it general or broadly, because not all the information is done, being collected. I mean, there's a lot of things out there right now. I mean, RDA, you know, you guys are still going through studies. We're looking at TIF restructuring. I think one of the biggest issues right now, which should really kind of, you know, light I think one of the biggest issues right now, which should really kind of, you know, light a fire under figuring out what to do, is public safety. Our public safety officials don't feel comfortable servicing that building. The citizens are losing out on two blocks of public infrastructure. I, I think, you know, we definitely need to be smart about it, and I think you guys are in the process of it. I mean, we're, we're doing that. You know, as far as the best way to look at it, I don't, you know, I've spoken at a few meetings prior, and hear about, you know, certain issues regarding the riverfront, and I think it's best to keep our options wide open, whether it involves a blacksmith, a blacksmith shop, or a Highway Trailer Building, or not. I don't think we should tunnel ourselves into one direction. I, I think we need to come up with the best plan. We don't, we shouldn't be limiting ourselves, and until the financial studies are done, Scott, I know you've prepared a lot of, you know, the cost analysis, but, I mean, it's still in the hands of RDA, and, you know, from what I know, they make a recommendation to council, and so, if I was on council, I would, you know, follow along with what they're doing, you know, more closely, knowing that I would have the responsibility of serving on here, and knowing, you know, what needs to be done. Take their recommendations, look at those studies, once they're all produced and submitted, and make the best decision for the city. You know, and, as I mentioned, you know, being the first one to answer, you know, one thing that I maybe wanted to mention about, you know, myself, is that I, I feel, you know, personally, a, a good representative for a younger generation in this community. You know, I feel I am, you know, pretty much what the city is looking to attract, and the school district is looking to attract, and I think having that balance and that representation on the council is, is a great benefit, you know, to, to everybody. I mean, that's, it's not getting more of the same, it's getting different opinions, different ideas, different perspectives, from, you know, from a different generation, I would say. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Duranzik is next.
I won't talk for a half hour. Since I am a member of the RDA, and I have been involved with this extensively, this is a wonderful opportunity for this community. We did a charrette, and for people who don't understand what a charrette is, it's the three-day workshop to get input from the community on what people want to see there. And there was consensus from the community that they wanted a bicycle path, and they wanted community open space. And we left with at least six different concept plans. Now, the, Mark Ernst, who was the head architect, recommended one plan. Unfortunately, I don't think the RDA actually put its seal of approval to that one plan, and that is one of the things we do have to do. We also have to take a look at coming to some agreement about density, and we have to take into consideration, of course, what the community would like. We've also heard that the community would like to not only have rental, but also have owner occupied, and I know that this is another issue that we have to address. We also have to address the issue of the historic buildings, such as a blacksmith shop and the pump house, which, by the way, I do support, keep, keeping both of those historic buildings. Hopefully, that addresses some of the concerns I heard out there from some of you folks. But, we need to figure out how we're going to phase this project in, because how we plan financially is going to make this development sink or swim. We don't have a money tree here, so it means we can't just dump $6 million into this development. We have to, you know, phase it in, and this is something that the RDA has to also start to address, is how are we going to phase this in, so that we can start to communicate to you what we need financially, because of course, you're going to be looking at a lot of financial stuff this, this, this evening. So, there are a lot of spokes on this wheel, and, you know, in some respects, it, it is hard for someone who has not been really immersed, like myself, to, to understand all the details. So, I just think it's great. It's a, it's a wonderful opportunity. It's not going to happen overnight. I know people are anxious, but it's going to take years, you know, because we have to do some development, so that we can get some increment, so we can start to pay off the loan, and then we can go to kind of the next phase, where we then have to do more, like, infrastructure improvements. So, it's complex, but I found it very challenging and interesting to be on this committee. I've done a lot of reading, and unless you're on the committee, sometimes I kind of wonder, it's like, whoa, there's just a lot of stuff going on. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It is a great opportunity for the city of Stoughton, and thanks to everyone who's been involved in the project thus far. Appreciate your efforts. Going forward, I think the biggest challenge is just getting organized, so that, you know, once we make decisions, collect the data that we need, we set a plan, and we follow that. You know, going forward, stepping back, going forward, stepping back only encourages additional costs, raises some uncertainty to people who want to get involved in the process. So, I think as a council, we just got to make sure that everything is in order, so when we go forward, we're going forward as a unified step, so we get the best, best interest in the project.
Thank you. Okay, I'm a little afraid to ask if there are more questions. I think maybe we'll just go right into, into, into the vote. Holly has some, some papers. We can just hand them down the way here. Just take one and hand it down.
What do we need? What are we doing?
Well, you'll be marking for the candidate of your choice, you also need to sign your name on this ballot. Holly and Attorney Dregney will then add them up and let us know the results.
Yeah, we need your name, because we're not allowed to do a secret ballot.
Do we have to turn if it's not going to be signed?
We're on a roll. Oh, there is one more. I almost didn't get that one in.
She'll check to make sure she's got 11.
I did too. I was so impressed, I voted twice.
Early and often. Yeah.
For Matthew Hanna, there are three votes. For Denise Duranzik, there are seven votes, and for David Erdman, there is one vote.
That adds up to a total of 11, so welcome Denise Duranzik to the City Council, and then Clerk Holly will administer the oath. Thank you as well to, to Matt, and Hannah, and Dave Erdman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You have to do the oath.
Yes, I know, but I wanted to put my stuff down.
Oh, that's not going to work. You two together.
The three of us?
Yeah.
I, Denise Duranzik.
I, Denise Duranzik.
Having been appointed to the office of District One Alderperson.
Having been appointed to the office of District One Alderperson.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the said office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially execute the duties of my.
Office.
Office.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, thank you. We had three good candidates here, so appreciate that.
You were all excellent.
Thank you. All right, thank you. We'll let Holly get seated, and John is setting Elder Person Duranzik up with the laptop for this evening, so she can participate in the rest of the meeting. While that's happening, let's all move on to Agenda Item 11, and sort of get, get situated on that. And break just a little. Jensen, he's not feeling well.
I will give you a call, then. This is mine, too.
Okay. Agenda item number 11 is Resolution 18 of 2018, coming from our Finance Committee. Elder Person O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 18, 2018, resolution to authorize and direct proper city officials to enter into an agreement with Kenneth F. Sullivan for the new public works facility project. Finance Committee met tonight and approved it unanimously, and I move for approval.
Second.
There's a motion by O'Connor, a second by Elder Person Engelberger. Elder Person O'Connor.
Well, pretty self-explanatory, after the bids were opened, very competitive, very tight, and I think maybe Rodney might want to talk a little bit about it, if it's okay with the mayor, and.
Yes, please.
In terms of the actual experience.
I think the, the advertising, the time that we had to advertise this and the project scope really led us to get a competitive spirit in the bids. Seven bidders on this project really recognized there was a competitive market here. The, the three low bidders were within $60,000 of one another. You'll recognize the recommended alternative takes into consideration the interest by the council to pursue the solar option, and that's included in here as well. There was one thing that we did recommend as part of the finance motion, was to delay execution of the, the actual contract until the bonding is in place, the funding is in place. So, that would be the, the request to add that to the, the intent of the motion.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call. Swadley?
Aye.
Boersma?
No.
Johnson? Reeves?
Aye.
Mieske?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Truell?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Bartlett?
Aye.
Um, Hirsch?
Aye.
Duranzik? That motion carries on a vote of nine to two. Did I read that right? Yep, nine to two. We'll move then, remember, we're going to go on to Agenda Item 13. So, we're skipping around here a little bit, but Agenda Item 13 comes from our Finance Committee as well. Elder Person O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. Discussion and action to approve the following resolutions related to borrowing of funds for the Public Works Facility project and refinancing of 2015 note anticipation notes as follows. Resolution 29, 2018, authorizing the general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $9 million for public works projects. Resolution 30 dash 2018, initial resolution authorizing $4 million, $70,000 in general obligation refunding bonds. Resolution 31, 2018, directing publication of notice to electors related to the bond issue, and Resolution 32, 2018, providing for the sale not to exceed $13 million, $70,000 in general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2018A. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion by O'Connor, second by Truell. Elder Person O'Connor.
Well, essentially, the money to pay for the buildings and our other obligations as well. Mr. Murray is here to talk with us.
Thank you. Welcome, Joe.
Good evening. I'm Joe Murray from Springstead, the city's financial advisor. As was mentioned, at the Finance Committee before council meeting tonight, we started the process, I say "we" being the city, started the process for the issuing of the financing plan for both the public works facility and to also refund and take out long the note anticipation notes for Phase One of Kettle Park West. The plan at this point would be to combine those two purposes into one issue, would be to borrow $8 million, $495,000 to finance the public works facility, and bids have come in at 8.45 million. That would cover the cost of issuance, as well as the debt service. The debt service associated with the public works facility is structured with 20-year level debt service, and would be financed through property taxes. The impact of the borrowing will increase, will have debt service of approximately $613,000 a year. Based on your 2017 equalized value, that'll increase taxes by 5.75 cents per $100,000, or $5.75 per $100,000, starting in 2019, and then it'll stay level going all the way out through 2038. The total impact to, for total principal and interest for the public works facility on $100,000 equalized value will be 110, 100, approximately $115. That's the tax impact. The second component is to refund the note anticipation notes issued in 2015 to finance the public improvements in Phase One of Kettle Park West. At that time, the plan was to issue these note anticipation notes with capitalized interest, so that there would be three years of development, so that we could see what increment would be generated out in Kettle Park West, waiting for it to get in the ground, if you will. Once that was to happen, we would look to take those out long, to, to the termination date of the TIF district, and structure it based around the income stream and increment coming from Kettle Park, such that it would not have a tax impact. Based on that time in 2019, 2015, we anticipated borrowing roughly 4.26 million at this point to take it out, and it projected that at that time, it would have a debt service cost of about $342,000 a year, and that Kettle Park West increment would be coming in at $382,000. Now, the borrowing plan for, that's proceeding, and will be in front of you, will be to issue 4.07 million at 16-years-long debt service, that works out to approximately $345,000 a year in debt service cost. Right now, this year, Kettle Park West will generate about $413,000 in increment, so that's up from what we had projected, even after taking out the cost of the administrative cost for the city of about $7,000 a year. There should be more than ample funds at $400,000 plus to cover the $345,000 of debt service associated with the note anticipation, uh, note refunding. And I just wanted to highlight, and I know it's later on your agenda, talking about the reduction in the letter of credit for Kettle Park West. The news on the increment is, is higher than we had projected, and in the attachment that you're going to see at that time, and the projected debt service is lower than what we had in the exhibit you're going to see, so I just wanted to remind people of that. The first step in the process this evening is to adopt the four initial resolutions. The initial resolution is required by statute, anytime you want to issue a bond for certain purposes, and a bond is anything over a 10-year end term. So, for the public works facility, issuing it as a bond requires an initial resolution to be published in the paper. The voters have a 30-day petition period to force it to referendum if they so choose. That would start from tomorrow. That starts after, the day after adoption, and requires a 10% of the turnout in the last gubernatorial election to force it to go to referendum. My 10 years, I haven't seen it happen, but it is a procedural requirement that you have to go through. The refunding component for taking out the, the neons is not subject to referendum, and you need to come up with the $4 million and plus in debt service payment that's due on October 1, regardless. So, it's either you refinance it, take it out long, or you come up with the four plus million dollars to pay for it on October 1. So, those are the initial resolutions for you this evening. I'd be happy to discuss any questions or procedures you might have, but if approved, the plan would be to be back, conduct the sale on March 27, and be before you at that time to actually award the, the sale.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
I have a question.
Elder Person Duranzik?
I have a question on some...
I have a question on some, we got an amended agenda, and there was total debt principal and interest, Tammy? And there were two columns. There was general fund transfer in, general transfer in. Two columns. Under the one column for 2018, it said general transfer in was over $7 million. So I was a little, could you explain?
Which document are you looking at?
I'm looking at this document here.
Okay. You're looking at, see what happened in 2017, we had, or I should say 2018, we had $4,775,000. That's the note anticipation notes. That was included in the entire borrowing numbers, and we backed that out to get a better picture of what the true amount was that we needed to levy tax for, paying back the principal and interest. So we're going to have to take- We're going to actually, we put $2 million, what was it, $2,600,000 in the budget. The NAN portion was something that would have to have been done as an additional measure outside of this normal process to get numbers for the budget. So when we move forward with the creation of the 2018 budget, we needed to know exactly how much we needed to be able to pay principal and interest for what had been borrowed to date.
And the $7 million is?
The $7 million was the combination of the 2.6 plus the 4.775.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I guess there was another amended piece, the debt service schedule?
Those are the proposed capital borrowings moving forward based on the CPI schedule, CIP schedule that was reviewed last September.
Okay.
They're not definite. They were merely just proposed figures at that time.
And the CIP, is it?
Capital improvement.
Yeah, I know what, I know what it is. I'm just wondering, where on the website can I find the CIP?
It would have probably been in one of the agenda packets. I can make sure that you, that it's out there.
Okay. That should be something that probably should be on the website, and if you can, I would like to have a copy of that, or give me a link.
Thank you. Additional questions? Alder Person Boersma?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for coming. My question is really a statement, and that is, one of the reasons why a lot of people wanted this facility, public works facility, was that the, there's two of them. One, as I understand it, was because the other one was wearing out, and the other, the other one was that that was going to be at least partly tied into the development on the riverfront. And that was well and good, I think, when we had a developer. We don't, we don't have a decision on the development. We don't have a developer. It's kind of integral to the whole notion of the development, but we may be putting the horse, I think, in back of the cart or something. My feeling is that, you know, there's a time and a place for everything, and this is an awful lot of money to spend when we don't have a real plan in place. And so, just to let everybody know, I will be voting against this because I think it's pretty expensive and we don't really have a good plan.
Thank you. I think Director Abear would like to comment.
One of the issues is that the building is starting to deteriorate, but the other main issue is that we're running out of space. We have a major space issue that's immediate right now, and that's not going to get any better on that site. So the RDA is a part of the equation, but to me, that's, that's really third. First is the building itself, the structure, then second is our space needs, and third is the RDA component of this whole deal.
Thank you, Brett. Additional comments? Council President Swadley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Certainly hear your concerns, Sid. I think making a decision and going forward with the public works building will, will help that development. It'll help us secure somebody to come in and develop the property. If we were to delay vote on this, the cost of putting up the public works building will increase likely 3% to 5% a year. So it'll cost us more money in the end to do it. And I think the efficiencies that are going to be created in the new facility are really important, you know, moving forward as the community grows and gets bigger, not only grows, but expands. So I think that the time is right to do this. We do have enough money in our borrowing capacity to do that. It may limit some of the other things that we may want to do or we may be asked to do going forward, so I think we have to be conscious of that as well. So I think, you know, bringing up concerns about borrowing is certainly important.
Thank you. Alder Person Johnson?
Mayor, I have a question about 3018. Can you, just to make it clear, so with the bond that we are doing, we're refinancing, because when we originally did KPW, it was going to come about it like in three years? Is that what, and we're just redoing? Why do we have to do it? Is that because it's in the bond that it's three years?
Yes, yes. The note anticipation notes come due October 1 of 2018.
Okay.
And at that time, it'll be $4 million plus owed by, that's the difference in the figure that was, question that was raised in the budget, is the cash that's going to be paid, needs to be paid off on October 1. You'll either pay for it with the refunding and taking it out long, or you're going to need to come up with the cash on October 1.
So is there, with anything else that's coming up, or is it just going to go out 16 years from here, after this three-year?
It'll go out to, it'll go out for a 16-year term, which will coincide with the life of the TID as it's currently planned, and it'll have a 10-year call provision so that if there are surplus funds or want it to refund it, to shorten it, or to do something else, we could, you could look to do that in 10 years.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Alder Person Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a question with regard to the note anticipation notes. The rate that we borrowed them at three years ago, and what's the rate now that we're refinancing at?
Well, the projection on the total, the total projected true interest cost on this is 3.46%, so it's just under three and a half. Let me see if I've got that here. Rates have gone up, obviously, since three years ago. The rate we had projected at that time, when we were talking about going out long at this time, we had projected a true interest cost of three and a quarter. So it's about 25 basis points higher than what we had projected at that time.
And my point being, we could have done things a little different three years ago, instead of just borrowing for three years.
I think the, that similar question came up at the Finance Committee earlier this evening, and the part of the reason for the note anticipation note was to provide that time for Kettle Park West to get in the ground and to make sure that they were going to deliver on the promises they had before the city taking on the, committing to the bonds three years ago, when you didn't know what was actually going to be in the ground, I think was the decision at that time.
Thank you.
Among other reasons.
Are there additional comment, are there additional comments or questions? Alder Person?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one of the comments that Joe made at Finance Committee. The reason to do them both now is it's more cost-effective to do it now than to just do the public works building and then turn around in the fall and go through the borrowing process again. And I think that was a good point, and whoever, you know, decided to do that, I think that was a very wise move. So I think whoever is responsible for that.
Thank you. Without additional questions, we'll vote by roll call.
Which resolution are we on?
I'm sorry. Thank you for that clarification. We can vote for each resolution individually, which is probably preferred. So let's start with Resolution 29 of 2018 with a roll call vote. Resolution 29 is the resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed $9 million for the public works facility project. There's a motion by O'Connor, a second by Truel, unless you would like to motion differently?
No.
I'm looking at the two. Okay. So we'll vote by roll. Johnson?
No.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mieske?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Truel?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Bartlett?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Swadley?
Aye.
Boersma?
No.
Duranzic?
Aye.
Motion carries on a vote of nine to two. Resolution 30 of 2018, same motion by O'Connor, second by Truel, to approve an initial resolution authorizing $4 million, $70,000 in general obligation refunding bonds. We'll vote by roll. Swadley?
Aye.
Boersma?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mieske?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Truel?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Bartlett?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Duranzic?
Aye.
That motion carries on a vote of 10 to 1. Resolution 31 of 2018 is a resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issue, and that was a motion by O'Connor, second by Truel. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. Resolution 32 of 2018 is a resolution providing for the sale of not to exceed $13 million, $70,000 in general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2018A. Motion by O'Connor, second by Truel. We'll vote by roll call. Boersma?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mieske?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Truel?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Bartlett?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Swadley?
Aye.
Duranzic?
Aye.
That motion carries on a vote of nine to two. Thank you, and have a safe trip back, Joe.
Thank you.
So we're going to go all the way back to the very beginning of our agenda, which is old business. Resolution, our ordinance, 3 of 2018, Agenda Item 5, coming from our Planning Commission for a second reading. Alder Person Truel.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Planning Commission brings forth Ordinance 3-2018, an ordinance approving a general development plan at 565 Kensington Square for a proposed deck expansion. I move approval.
Motion by Truel, second by Engelberger. Alder Person Truel.
This is, is continuing what has happened in that development. As a few folks add decks, we need to take it up in an ordinance fashion, so I'm encouraged to support this.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Ordinance 4 of 2018 also comes from Planning Commission for a second reading this evening. Alder Person Truel.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Planning Commission brings forth Ordinance 4-2018, an ordinance amending the zoning classification of property at a CSM Lot 1 and 3 at 1035 Sunt Lane in the city of Stoughton from neighborhood business to single-family residential. I move approval.
There's a motion by Truel, second by Engelberger. Alder Person Truel.
As you see in your packet, this is the combination of a couple of lots on Sunt. Effectively, Rodney, if you correct me if I'm not mistaken, one of the buildings was previously used commercial, and it's-
And still is.
It will remain. Lots 1 and 3 will be the, the single-family residential.
Thank you. Comments? Alder Person Boersma?
Just one question. Any neighborhood concerns? Anybody, any neighbors who are upset about this, or?
None that spoke today. None that spoke today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. Ordinance 5 of 2018 comes from our Public Works Committee for a second reading. Alder Person Jensen is chair of that committee and had to leave early this evening. Alder Person O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 5, 2018, amending Section 10-2, Baron D of Construction Standards, Terrace Trees, and Creating City Ordinance, Section 6694, Baron 13, Terrace Trees. Tree Commission approved 5 to 0, and Public Works Committee approved 3 to 0 as well. I move for approval.
Second.
It's a motion by O'Connor, second by Truel. Alder Person O'Connor.
This ordinance is dealing with placement of trees as property is being developed and as well as undeveloped lots. The city attorney had some concerns about the way it was presented initially, that it was unconstitutional, so we thought we might change it.
We probably should. Comments or questions? Alder Person Boersma?
This, I'm, I'm the representative of the Tree Commission, and this came up, and we had a, we talked a lot about this, and we presented through Rodney some changes and verbiage, and it went to, then it got to the city attorney, and the city attorney felt like it was a problem. And then we talked about it at Public Works and actually re-talked about it at Tree Commission and approved that 5 to 0 for the changes that were recommended. And so I think both the Tree Commission and the Public Works are in favor of this plan.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? This motion carries. New business will continue. We'll go to Agenda Item 9. Resolution 16 of 2018 comes from our Parks and Rec Committee and by our Finance Committee. Alder Person O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 16, 2018, to approve setting park shelter fees to $40 for residents and $60 for non-residents in 2018, and $50 for residents and $70 for non-residents in 2019. Finance Committee approved 5 to 0. Parks and Rec approved 4 to 0. I move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
A motion by O'Connor, second by Truel, and our Parks and Rec Director Glenn is here if we have questions. Questions or comments for Dan? Dan, did you want to speak? Nope. He's got nothing to say right now. He's good. All right, with no comments, we'll vote by roll call. Bartlett?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Swadley?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mieske?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Truel?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Duranzic?
Aye.
That motion carries on a vote of 11. Oh, Resolution 17 of 2018 also comes from our Parks and Rec Committee and Finance. Alder Person O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. The resolution to authorize and direct proper city officials to award the contract for pickleball courts at Mant Park. Park and Rec approved 5 to 0. Finance Committee approved with, I think it was unanimous.
I think it was unanimous.
And so I move for approval.
Second.
Motion by O'Connor, second by Engelberger. Alder Person O'Connor.
This is a cooperative project with the Lions and-
The Bryant Foundation.
And who?
Bryant.
And the Bryant Foundation to put in a pickleball court down at Mant Park, so.
Thank you. Questions? Alder Person Boersma?
I play some pickleball, and I've spoken to a number of people who play pickleball, and they are very, very happy about, about this whole project, and I would say that they are either tickled or pickled pink.
Pickled pink.
But don't bump. There we go. Alder Person Mieske?
I support anytime we can add more recreational facilities. However, in this case, I voted against this for the same reason I voted against the Whitewater Canoe Facility. We're building a house without a foundation. We have no master plan. What was brought up in Finance was a question about parking for this facility. There is none. So, you know, we're going to build a facility where we have no support for it, and- and we don't have a master plan for the entire area, which is a very important area with the upcoming development of the riverfront in the future. I, you know, it's a rock and hard place here. I, I always support quality of life additions, however, in this case, I can't do that, just because of the fact that we do not have a master plan. We're, we're developing things at whim, and, uh, without good planning, you get what you deserve with this, then. You're gonna get problems.
Any additional comments? Alder Person Johnson?
I second what Tom, uh, said, or Alder and Tom. Um, I think, again, we're going into a project where we don't have vision or planning. I can just see that if something in the future with the riverfront, um, without even, I didn't even know about the, not having issue with the parking, but just not having an overall plan for the area, I think is gonna bite us later, and...
Alder Person Hirsch?
Um, I kinda disagree, because Dan has actually put together this plan that he has shared multiple times. It actually shows that we are going to be expanding parking, and he has an overall plan. This is just a piece of it. You have, you know, we don't have, how many times have we said we don't have this money tree, so when we do have an opportunity of the city, Bryant Foundation, and Lions coming together to pay for things, you jump on it and you start working towards this master plan, which Dan and Tom, previous Director Lynch, have put together, and if we need to, I mean, I don't know how much more of a master plan we want. We don't have a master plan for the, across the river, yes, but that's not Park's responsibility. That is RDA's responsibility and us here responsibility. It's not a Park project, so...
Thank you. Alder Person Bartlett?
I agree with Alder Person Hirsch. This isn't coming out of nowhere. The past director and current director have both brought this before, as, before, and the Parks Committee has been working on this for quite a while. It's a great example of public and, uh, our community involvement and a partnership on this. There's a demand for the pickleball court, uh, and the people who've come up with money for it to help the city pay for it, so I think it's a great, great opportunity. There is parking down there next to the, I don't know what you call them, the shelter buildings with the, the barns down there. There's a, there's a large parking area. Also have the Mant Community Center parking, parking along the road down there, so there is parking. Uh, this isn't coming out of a vacuum. This has been discussed for quite a while, so it's been planned. It's been out there for a long time, so I'm gonna support it.
Thank you. Alder Person Engelberger?
Thank you, Honor. I'm gonna support this also, um, but I do believe we should, uh, you know, I mean, Alder Hirsch says we do have a master plan. I, I'm not certain that we do, but, uh, I, I would like to see Alder Mieske get together with, uh, the Parks Committee and the Parks Director, and, and let's, uh, talk about a master plan, and if we don't have one, that, uh, you know, something that we can, uh, move towards. So I, I, I think we are doing, we were doing a great job with the resources that we have, but if Alder Mieske has a problem with, we, we're not, uh, planning properly, let's get to the bottom of it. Let's have some meetings about it.
Thank you. I had Alder Person Hirsch and then Boersma.
Okay.
Um, yes, Alder Person Mieske, you're always welcome, and we, we've invited you to meetings to discuss it. I think, um, we are putting together more of this plan. Like, last, uh, meeting, we actually approved money to get proposals from, for the Whitewater Park that would add to this plan, so we will have an overall plan. That's what you guys approved. I think we are moving towards what everybody wants, but it is a stepwise process, and I think maybe what we'll need to do is, you know, we'll ask Dan to give an overview of this, maybe when, you know, we can put it on the agenda, so everybody's up to date. Maybe if we can put it on the agenda soon, next meeting, or something. I would entertain that, not to put Dan on the spot, but, you know, I think if we're having problems with, uh, relaying what our plan is and we want input, I think we need to actually have Dan explain it to everybody, so everybody is on the same page.
Thank you. Alder Person Boersma, and then Johnson.
Yeah, and this is just for Dan. Um, we had, and this may relate more to Tom, but when, when Tom was presenting to us, he was talking about, like, a cool and nifty restaurant, or sort of public facility on that, and, and does this, uh, help with that, or does, is there any detraction, detraction from that? I mean, is it, is it, uh, is it gonna detract from that whole other part of your, the anticipated development there? Like, that, that, that cool restaurant he's talking about?
No, we always envisioned having a rental, a facility where you could have, you know, a snack and drink, uh, in a patio area, so, so somebody, they're coming off the river, or they're using a pickleball court, they could utilize the restrooms in that facility and, you know, refreshments and things like that. So I, I think they work together.
Thank you. Um, there's a picture right behind you, Sid, but we're not all kind of ignoring you. Um, Alder Person Johnson?
That's not the latest one. Thank you. Um...
It was gonna be okay.
Uh, let's just say, okay. Um, we voted last time. I know we're, I, I totally agree with what Tom's saying, and maybe getting together and, and, and to look at a plan. I think we're selling sometimes the city a bill of goods, calling it a whitewater rafting. It's not gonna be whitewater rafting. It's going to be a, it's gonna be a stream with a little dip. We don't have elevation, and what was said in that meeting, and I know I'm going off, and it's, we're not voting on that, that there's not something like this for, for hours around. That's because there's, we don't have the elevation. So for people to say it's a whitewater rafting, people are getting the image that they're gonna have whitewaters, they're gonna be bringing kayaks and, and things. There's nothing around like it, because we don't have the elevation. So people are getting the wrong impression. And you can look at Iowa. Iowa has four times as large a river, so the velocity going through an area is that. So that's why I question the planning and the, the information that is going out to the public, because once it's built...
Let's, let's get back to pickleball.
Pickleball, okay, thank you.
Let's get back to pickleball.
Pickleball, thank you.
And then Dan will talk to us a little bit more about the rest of the plan, and how he's been working with the DNR on that. Additional comments on pickleball? We'll have instruction next time, too, maybe. All right. Um, Resolution seventeen in two thousand and eighteen, um, there was a motion by O'Connor, second by Alder Person Engelberger. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
I heard two no. Is that correct? Alder Person Johnson and Alder Person Mieske? That motion carries. Agenda Item twelve, Resolution twenty-five of two thousand and eighteen, comes from our Finance Committee and CACP. Alder Person O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution twenty-five, twenty eighteen, authorizing and directing proper city officials to approve the network infrastructure agreement with Spectrum to live, to deliver teledata services to the proposed Public Works Building located at twenty-four thirty-nine County Highway A. CACP approved on three to zero, February sixth. Finance Committee approved unanimously tonight. I move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion by O'Connor, second by Alder Person Truul. Alder Person O'Connor?
Uh, this is essentially to get fiber optic down to, uh, the Public Works Building. John's here to answer any questions you may have.
All right, John, would you like to explain what it is? But you have to say it in layman's term, not, not IT speak, 'cause...
I wanted to string a line of fiber optics from the new Public Works Building that will go directly point-to-point to the Public Safety Building. Reason why it's going to the Public Safety Building is because Charter already has fiber going into that building, and we can just splice into it. And then from there, a fifty meg up-and-down speed out of the Public Safety Building, out to the Internet.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Alder Person Truul?
Quick question, John. Uh, the, the fiscal impact that's listed is a monthly recurring of fourteen sixty. Aren't we also, is, does that already take into consideration some of the savings that we're gonna have?
No, it does not. The plan is to roll, get rid of the cop, or the coax service that's in the Public Safety Building now, which will reduce two hundred and fifty dollars a month to be applied towards the fourteen sixty, and then as we move forward and bandwidth allows it to, then take all of the existing coax in the other buildings and move that onto the fiber, further reducing that cost.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Were there other questions? Seeing none? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Agenda Item fourteen, Resolution nineteen of two thousand and eighteen, comes from our Finance Committee. Alder Person O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution nineteen, twenty eighteen, approving an amendment to, and restatement of ground lease and bill of sale relating to the building and land located at four hundred Parkway, Mant Community Center. Finance Committee approved tonight unanimously. I move to approve.
Second.
It's a motion by O'Connor, second by Truul. Alder Person O'Connor?
Um, a question for Matt. Did you have some language change on this resolution?
No, the resolution is, the, the, the agenda language doesn't match up. No, I guess it does here. It didn't have the Finance Agenda, but the Council Agenda looks good.
Okay. So, um, city entered into agreement back in nineties, I think, where, um, we took some payments for the building and, uh, still continue to lease the property, and so, um, this is just giving the, the, um, property back to, the building, back to, uh, the Mant Community Center group.
Correct, thank you. Alder Person Truul?
Thank you, Honor. As, as someone who served, uh, on the MCCI Board for many years, and had the privilege of, of being, uh, the chairman, uh, for a few, um, this really, someone made the comment kind of off the cuff at, at Finance, that this is a good day. This is a really important thing, because what's happened is that the Mant Center has finally paid off the debt. The city needed to step up. Um, uh, when this project began, it was, it was put together by a lot of volunteers in the community that tried to make, uh, make the facility happen. Uh, unfortunately, they ran into some financial challenges, uh, early on, and, and the city stepped up and helped out with, with some bonding. Um, uh, we're able to do this finally because that, those, those bonds have been paid off. Um, so, um, you know, I didn't want this to pass without letting people know that it really is a good day, uh, and, and that the community has, has done a great job, uh, you know, starting this out, and, uh, I know there was a question at Finance, too, about the, the lifecycle of the building. I think it is important. I think the, the Mant Board is, from what I understand, I'm no longer involved, but they are continuing to look at, at maintenance and ideas and things now, and now that they've, they've got that debt, uh, away, they, they can really, uh, continue to extend the life of, of this community facility.
Absolutely, thank you. Comments or questions from our older persons? We'll vote by roll call. Boersma?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mieske?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Truul?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Bartlett?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Swadley?
Aye.
Duranzik?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Resolution twenty of two thousand and eighteen comes from our Finance Committee. Alder Person O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution twenty, twenty eighteen, authorizing and directing proper city officials to execute the Stoughton Electric Utility Lease and Lease Back Addendum to Amendment and Extension of Real Estate Lease. Finance Committee, um, met tonight and approved it unanimously. I move for approval.
It's a motion by O'Connor?
Second.
Second by Truul. Alder Person O'Connor?
Uh, this was at the end of the lease agreement, uh, with the Stoughton Utilities Building, and this is just reauthorizing it.
Thank you. Tammy, did you wanna...
What we're doing is, we're, we, in the agreement itself, we have the option to explore first renewal and a second renewal period of each of them at five years, and so we are, um, recommending that we move forward with the first renewal period. It'll be for a period of five years. The first three years, we'll see a three percent increase in the rent, and the, uh, last two years, that will be determined based on the CPIU at that time. Uh, the utilities' rent will increase, and the EMS, who currently rents space from the, uh, utility, will decrease. Uh, this is something that, um, we've discussed with utility, and they are, um, okay with what's been proposed.
Thank you. I believe Bob, unless you're...
We are.
Okay. Comments or questions from our older persons? Seeing none? We'll vote by roll call.
Thank you.
Um, Reeves?
Aye.
Mieske?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Truul?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Bartlett?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Swadley?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
And Duranzik?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Resolution twenty-one of two thousand and eighteen also comes from our Finance Committee. Alder Person O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution twenty-one, twenty eighteen, authorizing and directing proper city officials to establish a fee structure for perpetual care costs and to increase fees for interments at Riverside Cemetery and Wheeler Prairie Cemetery. Cemetery Board approved four to zero, and Finance Committee met tonight and approved unanimously as well. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion by O'Connor, second by Truul. Alder Person O'Connor?
Um, Brett brought this to our attention after researching it, and has suggested
Brett brought this to our attention after researching it and has suggested some costs to equalize the costs associated with it, rather than having it being somewhat haphazard.
Thank you. Director Abear?
We just wanted to provide structure to how we charge for perpetual care. In the past, there was really no structure. It was anywhere from $210 all the way up to $365 for perpetual care. So, we think it's important to establish a structure for perpetual care and then have that in place going forward.
And what is perpetual care? What does that?
That's the fee that we take in to care for the folks that are there in perpetuity.
Have they been complaining?
If not, they've complained so far, so we're doing pretty well.
No complaints, that's good. That's a good thing. Comments or questions? Alderperson Forsma?
Just wanted to, so there must have been, originally when people were buried there, some kind of guarantee that this was going to be the amount that they were going to have to pay, like the families. So, how does that affect the original?
So, that said and done, going forward, there's an established, there was always perpetual care. It was just never a set fee. It was all over the place. It mattered if it was a burial on a Saturday, or a holiday, or a weekday, there was different prices. And really, there should be no different price based on the day of the week because, you know, that care for the land doesn't care about when you're buried.
You only pay perpetual care one time. It's not an ongoing charge because, as Brett might say, those that you'd want to charge might not.
So, it's from now on, then? It's from now on?
One charge, once, when there's a burial or cremation, and that's it. Further questions? Alderperson Duranzik.
Yeah, I have a procedural question. I noticed in the minutes that people who were not members of the committee were seconding motions. Has that process changed?
Well, let me see what you're talking about. Okay.
Because I always thought it was only members of the committee that could move and second a motion.
I know that I made some motions, and I think I am a member of that committee. It's not listed here as my being a member of that committee, but I think I am.
Well, I see that Halverson seconded a motion. I'm just trying to get an understanding.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, two people were talking at one time, and I can?
Pardon?
We just recently went through policy changes for council within the last year. None of that was ever addressed, nor was it brought up.
None of?
But Alderperson Duranzik is worried about it.
Yeah. It's not been discussed previously or identified that that was a concern until this evening. I see what you're asking for.
I'm just trying to get it clear, because I know in the past, it's always members of the committee can make motions, and I just want to have clarity on that.
Sure.
That's all.
Sure. Alderperson Mieski?
I fail to understand the reason why only a committee member can do a second, considering this is a body of the whole being brought forth.
You're asking a question about the committees' action, right? You're not talking about the council's seconding, are you?
No.
No, no. I'm talking about in committees, you know? I looked at the committee minutes for the Cemetery Board, and I found staff making seconds. And in the past, I thought that staff couldn't make motions, couldn't be part of a motion. I thought only the members of the committee could make motions and second a motion.
Well, I think we need to take a look, and the Cemetery Board is going to be meeting, or, yeah, it's called a board, going to be meeting again shortly, and really clean that up as to who's a member and who's staff, because I think that Brett is a member of the committee. He's also a staff, but he's a member. So, you know, we can clear that up for you.
Well, I just want to, I just want to know procedurally, is it just members of the committee that can?
Yes, that's true.
Okay. And we will clear it up and do better. We can do better. All right. Further comments or questions about Resolution 21 regarding fees? Alderperson Forsma?
Just one more. I'm trying to get my head around this, and that is, if a person buys a plot, they must be told what the, they must be told what the cost of that plot and perpetual care is going to be.
Yep, absolutely.
And some of these people probably have already bought plots and aren't buried there yet. I'm just, I'm just trying to get my head around this whole situation because they may have already been told how it's going to be, and now we're changing that, but.
They haven't paid the interment fee yet. They bought their lot, and so that's already purchased. Some of them have. We still have some open lots in Wheeler Prairie. And then, when they become interred, they pay that fee to be interred, and then also that perpetual care is a part of that. It always was. Now, we're just providing structure to that.
And when they bought the lot, Brett, were they told what the fees were going to be?
Some of these people have bought lots 60, 80 years ago.
And we're not planning to charge them additionally. This is only going forward.
Correct.
Anything going forward, Sid, I think is where you're confusing to you.
And that's why it's so important to provide that structure, so that they know upfront what the costs go to.
Okay, so we're not, no way we're going back?
No.
Okay.
Okay, that would be, that's my main concern, because they may have been told.
And that's the purpose for doing this, is that that structure's in place, so everybody's, they know what the costs are, where that money goes to.
Okay.
Yep, they only have to pay one time, and then they're good. Okay. So, there's been a motion by O'Connor, second by Truel, to approve Resolution 21, 2018. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. Resolution 14 of 2018 comes from our Finance Committee. Alderperson O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 14, 2018, authorizing reduction in the amount of the TIF Guarantee Letter of Credit provided by McFarland State Bank relating to the Kettle Park West Commercial Center. Finance Committee met tonight and approved unanimously. I move for passing. Recommend approval. Thank you.
Second.
Motion by O'Connor, second by Truel. Alderperson O'Connor.
Well, this is a letter of credit that was issued by McFarland State Bank to guarantee the completion of work out at KPW, and those warrants have been met, and we're under contractual obligation now to eliminate, or, yeah, eliminate the letter of credit as unnecessary.
Thank you. Attorney Dragney, have any comments to help?
Yeah, I guess my question would be, how much of a background, how much information does the council want? If anybody wants me to give the full kind of explanation of what we're doing and why I could do it?
Well, why don't you, just for those that are here and others at home, it's not going to?
There's a question over there.
I guess the question should be, is it hours long, or is it, it's not that?
I can probably do it in about three minutes.
All right, I'd say go for it. And then, Alderperson Engelberger?
The question I had was, is this per the contract that we signed?
Yes.
Or is this something they're trying to get in addition to?
No.
No, this is just.
Different than what the contract says.
And that's why it's good to let Matt go through it first.
Yeah, there is a memorandum of understanding that was negotiated between the city and the developer that set forth the methodology that would be used to evaluate reductions in the TIF Guarantee Letter of Credit. This is the letter of credit that was provided to guarantee that the city would have enough funds available to pay debt service on the money the city borrowed to pay for the public improvements. You heard earlier tonight about the fact that the city's going to move forward with borrowing money to pay off those note anticipation notes, and so you're, right now, you're projected to borrow $4,070,000 to do that. The development, based on the values that were in effect on January 1 of 2017, so that's over a year ago now, the values that were in effect as of January 1 of 2017 were certified by the Department of Revenue in September or October of 2017. So, the calculations that have been done to determine whether and how much the letter of credit can be reduced at this time were based on those values, 2017 values. That calculation shows, and there is an exhibit attached to the resolution that has the numbers, that shows that this project will now be generating enough tax increment on an annual basis to cover more than 110% of the debt service costs that the city will have on those refunding obligations. And in fact, the financial picture is even better than what this exhibit shows, because as Joe Murray said earlier, he's now projecting that the amount, the debts, the amount that the city has to borrow is $4,070,000. When he did this analysis, he was assuming it would be more, $4,295,000. So, actually, the amount the city's going to have to borrow to issue the refunding obligations is less than what he was projected here. So, under the memorandum of understanding, what the city negotiated was an agreement that said that once they hit 110%, once they're generating increment that is sufficient to cover 110% of that debt service obligation, they're entitled to have that letter of credit be reduced to zero. Until they hit that 110% threshold, they had to keep it at at least $1 million. Right now, the letter of credit that the city is holding is $2,263,968. But based on the math that's been done and the values that have been certified, under the memorandum of understanding that was negotiated, I believe the city is now in a position where it needs to authorize this, essentially this reduction down to zero, and that letter of credit can then be returned to McFarland State Bank. I'll just mention, the city is still holding another letter of credit from the developer in the amount of approximately $1.2 million, which was designed to, we call that the Construction Guarantee Letter of Credit. The purpose of that was to make sure that all of the improvements the developer was required to put in were actually put in. There is a process now underway to where the developer will be formally requesting that the city accept all of those improvements, certify that all of the work has been done, and that we get lien waivers in hand. And when that's done, then we'll, that letter of credit will also be something that we'll eventually need to approve giving back to the bank. But we're not talking about that one tonight. We're only talking about the TIF Guarantee Letter of Credit. So, we're following the agreement, and the math shows that, yes, they're based on values that were there last year, they're entitled to this reduction. So, I don't know if that was three minutes, but I'm done.
You were good. Alderperson Engelberger, and then Hirsch.
Thank you. Just one other question with regard to the development agreement. Are we, is the city getting reimbursed for some of the things, if I recall, that were in the agreement with staff time and those types of things?
Yeah, can I speak?
And if Tammy or somebody could?
I could speak to that briefly.
Talk about that a little bit?
Yeah. So, as I understand it, the developer has reimbursed the city for all of the expenses it was required to reimburse the city for in terms of staff-related and consultant-related expenses associated with Phase 1. And so, they paid, I don't know how much it cost them, they've cut some big checks to the city over time. So, I, as I understand it, there are no outstanding monies owed to the city for Phase 1-related costs or expenses, number one. So, I want to make that point. Number two, the TIF agreement, the agreement allows, and the way that we've done this calculation, on this TIF Letter of Credit calculation, we built into our projection an assumption that the city will allocate $7,000 a year, every year, from tax increment to the city to cover ongoing administrative expenses. So, that's built into the formula here. Even building in that $7,000 a year to cover administrative expenses, they're still exceeding that 110% threshold. So, to my knowledge, they're fully current on what they owe the city, and we have built into the pro forma here, into the spreadsheet, $7,000 a year to cover additional expenses that the city may have going forward. Now, the vast majority of the expenses associated with Phase 1, I think, are behind us. The bulk of the work that remains on Phase 1 is just processing that, the process of formally accepting the public improvements, reviewing all the lien waivers, making sure all that work has been done and approved and accepted, and then dealing with that other letter of credit. And we have built into this year, 2018, actually $18,000 in tax increment that will be available to cover those expenses, and we project that that should be adequate. So, does that, I think?
Yeah, and I guess the question I have is, where do I find that stuff on the, on our financial forms or financial reports? I question that stuff sometimes, and I never see it on our, on our reports. Where is that stuff located?
It'll be in our detail for Account 207, which is the TIF 7 Fund.
Okay, so it's, it's within our audit every year, our annual audit?
Yes.
Absolutely.
In fact, that was part of the project, was to go back, because some of this information hadn't been calculated with staff time going back to '16 and '17. So, I was able to get that information so that we could determine what our administrative costs were going to be for those years, and then forecast going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Alderperson Hirsch?
Thank you. I remember right back, this is when I first got on the council, when we were dealing with all this, that we had some assurances or letters, I thought there was these letters of credit that kind of worked all the way to the end of the payoff period of the TIF, so in case Walmart actually closed and that we weren't getting the increment, that we would be secure, is that not right? Or, you know, so what happens, say Walmart closes and we're not, our increment is not this, because the value then just plummeted? How are we going to pay back this amount of money if it wasn't for this letter of credit?
So, the letter, we don't have a letter of credit that goes beyond that 110% threshold. Once that's achieved, the letter of credit goes away. And then, going forward, the city has to rely on the increment that's there, and if it goes away, it goes away, and we have to deal with that problem. Now, the good news is that, at least from a tax increment standpoint, the commercial center, the district at this point, looks like it is, I mean, these calculations were based on numbers last year, 2017. So, there's more value coming on this year, and there's projected to be more the following year. So, I think it would be a pretty significant, there would have to be pretty significant problems out there to bring the increment down to a level where this would hit the taxpayer. I don't know. It would have to be pretty huge. The other thing we do have, and I don't have the details right in front of me, we do have a separate agreement with Walmart.
I think that's the one I was.
Yeah, and I'm going to see if I have that handy.
Well, Matt looks that up. We talked about it a little bit at Finance in that, well, these numbers were January 1 of 2017. When you think of what's happened out there since January 1 of 17, well, the Quick Trip was built, the new building that's being built right now, that's the Pancake Cafe, and the other, others in that, that larger building. Dunkin' Donuts is being built this summer, or this spring, the hotel will be built. This summer, McFarland Bank will be built. And then, there's that senior living that's also being built, and there are more empty lots. So, all of those aren't even considered in that 110%. So, that's, that's a comfort as well.
Okay, so, there is an additional agreement with Walmart that, it's a little longer than I remember. They were required to guarantee that they would, on their parcel alone, generate not less than $12 million in assessed value by January 1 of 2018, and it goes on to say, if in any year commencing in 2018 and continuing through the year in which the city borrowing is retired, that means our debt service is paid off, then Walmart shall pay the city the difference between the amount of the taxes on the Walmart parcel actually received by the city for that year and the amount the city would have received if it's assessed at less than $12 million. So, we have a $12 million guarantee from Walmart that lasts until your debt service is paid off.
Okay, that's where I thought there was something, and because it was like my, one of my first days on council, I just wanted to make sure this wasn't what was retiring.
That Walmart agreement is still in effect.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alderperson Forsma?
And just for everybody, I remember voting for that, and that Walmart, we had some, we had serious concerns about our handling that, the debt, if they went belly up, and that was one of the reasons why a number of the council actually done, did vote for it, because they, at the last, at the last juncture of this, of their, of the project, they came to us and said, we will, we will guarantee that.
So, we have that. Apparently, that's a somewhat uncommon agreement. Walmart hasn't apparently done that very much for very many, but they were willing to do it here.
We insisted on it.
It was part of the push, the final push.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Alderperson Swann?
Just a quick comment. So, I think it's important, and it didn't come up when Joe was here, for people to recognize that when we did the note anticipation note, as it was, it wasn't on our city debt service, but now, as we transition into the bonds, it will be. So, and Tammy sent out an email today, kind of summarizing where we at on our borrowing limits, and I would encourage everyone to look at that. There's a couple scenarios, and obviously, since we've passed the public works financing, that's the one you want to look at. You're going to see that we have approximately $8 million left worth of borrowing ability at this point, according to our policy, which is 4% of our property value. So, you know, going forward, we do have some requests on the table. Where we are on them requests, I'm not really sure. We had one from Wal-Enz. We have one for Kettle Park West, Phase 2. We have, obviously, some work we want to do down on the Riverfront Development. So, I think that it's important as a group that we kind of get up to speed where we at, where we're at on the borrowing. So, when we start having these discussions and making decisions on these proposals, we have a better understanding of what our financial abilities are going forward.
Okay, thank you. Without further questions, we'll vote by roll call on Resolution 14, 2018. Mieski?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Truel?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Bartlett?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Swadley?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Duranzik?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 18 comes from our Public Safety Committee and Finance. Alderperson O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. Discussion possible action to approve 2018 joint court agreements as follows. Resolution 22, 2018, authorizing direct property officials to execute 2018 joint agreement with Town of Dunkirk. Resolution 23, 2018, resolution to authorize direct property officials to execute 2018 joint court agreement with the Town of Pleasant Springs. And Resolution 24, authorizing direct property officials to execute 2018 joint court agreement with the Town of Rutland. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion by O'Connor, second by Truel. Alderperson O'Connor.
These are agreements that the court wants to enter in with the various agencies. We currently have an agreement with them, and as there's a little bit of a increase, and our court's able to handle it, then we just want to formalize things.
Alderperson Truel.
Thank you, Your Honor. As, as Oliver O'Connor commented, these are agreements that have been put in place. The original agreement with Dunkirk was 25 years ago, and the agreements with Pleasant Springs and Rutland were put in place 30 years ago. They all were amended in 2004. Fundamentally, it is an agreement that we will, we agree to have a municipal court, and then we will, we have a. then we will, we have agreements with the towns to be able to use our court system. Part of the discussion that came up is there are times when some of the townships may choose to do enforced enhancement where they perhaps bring in the County Sheriff's Department for an extra week to do traffic violations and things like that. We wanted to make sure that that wasn't going to cause an over, a burden on our court system. And so, again, this is kind of updating those agreements and it's all part of our overall discussion about making sure that we're getting an equitable share of assistance from some of our services that we offer to the towns around us.
Alder Person, Boersma.
And just, just in terms of time, I would ask that if it's possible, we can vote on all these together.
I don't think we can, Kevin. Certainly. It's also important to note that while at this time, both Judge Rothe and Court Clerk Maragisma feel that they can adequately handle and they have enough time to, to address any citations that may come forward with this additional enforcement, they're to keep us updated as to when that changes or if that changes so that towns are paying their, their adequate share of the multi-jurisdictional court system. Alder Person, Johnson.
Your Honor, I have a question. We were not able to vote on this all together and once in the committee. Can we do that in council? We had to do them separately.
You can still do it together if you want.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions or comments? I think we'll go ahead and vote by roll call. Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen. Oops, I'm sorry. Truel.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Swadley.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reeves. She stepped away for just a moment. Uh, Mieski.
Aye.
Duranzic.
Aye.
That motion carried unanimously on a vote of 10 with one alderperson, we'll say absent. Stepped away. Agenda item 19, Resolution 26 of 2018, comes from our Public Safety Committee. Alder Person, Truel.
Thank you, Honor. Public Safety brings forth Resolution 26-2018, authorizing and directing proper city officials to approve a temporary Class B, Class B retailer's license and special event license to Stoughton Ducks Unlimited. I move approval.
There's a motion by Truel, second by Engelberger. Alder Person, Truel.
Routine request, it's an annual event. The police department had no objections. They indicate that the event has always been run well, so I would encourage your support.
Thank you. Alder Person, Boersma.
Just a question is whether or not kids are at this event, do they typically go to this event?
I honestly don't know that answer, Sid. I believe the answer is no, but I don't know if anyone was.
We didn't, we didn't ask that question. Alder Person, Hirsch.
Isn't it with that Class B retailer's license, they need to have a certified bartender on and so there would be, even if they're our kids, they're, they have to be carded or?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, there does need to be a certified, or a licensed bartender there and I believe they have set up for someone that already has a license that works at Deeks to be the licensed bartender at the event.
Thank you very much. Perfect. Additional questions? Hey, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
I'll read my question.
Oh, you already aye'd. I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Yeah, we, we need, I would like this, yeah, roll call vote.
Roll call vote, okay, sure. Uh, Johnson.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Mieski.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Truel.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Swadley.
Aye.
Boersma.
No.
And Duranzic.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carried on a vote of 10 to 1. Resolution 27 of 2018 also comes from our Public Safety Committee. Alder Person, Truel.
Thank you, Honor. Public Safety brings forth Resolution 27-2018, authorizing and directing proper city officials to issue a Class B fermented malt beverage license and a Class C wine license to the Pancake Cafe, Stoughton LLC, Gary Teeman agent, doing business as the Pancake Cafe, to be located at 20, excuse me, 2420 State Highway, 138, Suite 106. Move approval.
Second.
It's a motion by Truel, second by Engelberger. Alder Person, Truel.
I'm, I'm sure that if you saw this in your packet, you probably wondered about a pancake house, wondering about a fermented beverage license. This is in terms of, they do not offer a full bar. This is a situation where they would like to be able to offer and serve mimosas, if I understand.
And Bloody Marys. Do not forget about Bloody Marys. Comments or questions?
Where is this located? I mean, it was on 1, Highway 138, is it part of that whole complex?
Yeah, it'll be, it's, it's one of the, one of the users of the current multi-tenant building that's being built and the applicant indicated that they will be open on April 1st.
Okay, but their address is actually 138, there isn't a different address? Okay. There's no Walmart Way that they're part of?
I'll defer to the clerk.
Pancake Way?
Pancake Way.
They're going to have Mickey Mouse pancakes and our kids are going to eat them?
Further questions? Back, we'll focus back here. We're getting, it's getting late and we're getting tired. Resolution 27 of 2018, motion by Alder Person Truel, second by Alder Person Engelberger. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
That motion carries with Alder Person Boersma voting no. Resolution 28 of 2018 also comes from Public Safety. Alder Person, Truel.
Thank you, Honor. Public Safety brings forth Resolution 28-2018, authorizing directing proper city officials to issue a Class B fermented malt beverage license and a Class B intoxicated liquor license to Lon's Tailgater LLC. Lon Pastoria's agent, doing business as Lon's Tailgater at 151 East Main, formerly known as Sunny's. I would move approval.
Second.
Motion by Truel, second by Alder Person Engelberger. Alder Person, Truel.
Again, this is a transfer. The former owners of Sunny's have sold to Mr. Pastoria's and so he's applying for license to continue the business.
Comments or questions?
Is this a new agent? Is that all it is or?
Yes.
It's, yes, but it's a, it's a new ownership as well.
Oh, new ownership, okay.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. Ordinance 7 of 2018 comes from Public Safety for a first reading. Alder Person, Truel.
And one final resolution from this corner of the council. The Public Safety brings forth Resolution 7-2018 and ordinance amending section 70-1 and adopting section 34, 3, excuse me, 343.0301 pertaining to the installation of ignition interlock devices. This is the first reading, it'll come back to us in two weeks, but effectively what this is, is us adopting a state standard so we can actually enforce this direction. We'll come back.
Questions? Alder Person, O'Connor.
I was just going to move to adjourn.
Oh, there you go.
Second, second.
It's a motion by O'Connor, second by Truel. Might as well keep it over there, second by Truel. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?